Six thirty, we're gonna call the meeting order. Okay, can we have a roll call?
Clemmons, Clifford, Eisenman, Esri.
Here.
Portato, Goss.
Here.
Harper.
Here.
Ingram, King Taylor.
Here.
McGuire, Patterson.
Here.
Rector, Rosales, Store, Summers. Taylor.
Here.
Orsland.
Here.
Tinsley.
Present.
Basha Spady.
Here.
Wilkin, Young.
Here.
Covert.
With a correction, under the county executive appointment, under policy personnel and appointment, the term was wrote down wrong and we need to correct it. Term is from, for the zoning board of appeal here, the term is from January the first, two thousand nineteen, to January thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
November.
November. It's eleven thirty, twenty twenty-two. It's okay.
Okay, eleven thirty, twenty-two.
Twenty, yep. Second.
Okay, if it moved in second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We need approval of the minutes for the committee of the whole for November thirteenth, twenty eighteen. Move in second, any discussion or correction? Say what? Okay, it's been moved in second, open for discussion. Seeing now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, public participation. Seeing now, because no names came for, now we're closed, public participation. Any communication from the board?
Is she on? Yeah. Yeah, so the Martin Luther King celebration will be taking place this weekend, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and Monday as well. And my wife, she's been nominated for one of the prestigious community awards. Her name is Alyssa Young, and she will be acknowledged Friday at the Vineyard Church at four o'clock. So if you guys can come out, I would really appreciate it, my lovely wife. She's on HRC, too, she's the chair. And I have some additional flyers if you guys need any.
Okay, Rick. Yes, again, on February second, one winter night, we'll be in downtown Champaign to support the homeless. And I think this will be my eighth year doing this, so come down, say hi, bring me some money, and a cup of coffee, but it's really a great event for our town, so just wanted to announce that. Thank you.
Oops, forgot, one last thing, can I say something?
Yes.
So also, I just want to let everybody know that the new legislation laws that was passed back in December from Illinois State House is now out on the website. You can Google the new Illinois state laws, and it's in a PDF form. So just Google if you concerned about state laws, and you had a right to interpret, and just know, it's good to know that. So they are out as of January first, twenty nineteen. Thank you.
Just as I'm now coming back into very cold snowy weather, just a reminder that several places are looking for donations of winter clothing. That includes the Cunningham Township Office will accept that and get it into the right hands. Also, Austin's Place, which is the overnight emergency women's shelter, is looking for anything like that that can be provided. So if you're digging deep and doing any of this, especially right now while everybody's doing... Now that everybody is watching the Netflix specials and cleaning their entire house and dumping everything out of their lives, if any of that happens to be winter clothing, please look for one of these local organizations. If you have any questions about Austin's Place, I'd be happy to answer them, and I'd be happy to take stuff from you and take it there. So thanks very much.
Any more communication? No. Okay, seeing now, we're gonna go into our committee, our committee meeting, and the first thing is Justice and Social Service, Mr. Cal Patterson.
Thanks. For first item, we have a Drug Court presentation. Judge Ford is here.
For those of you who don't know me, I'm Jeff Ford, Circuit Court Judge, and I'm gonna try and get this PowerPoint up here. Thank you for allowing me to come. Next to me is Drug Court Coordinator Amber Edmonds, who's been with us for a number of years and is instrumental in everything we do. And Amber's gonna help. I want to, a lot of people don't know about Drug Court or think they know things about Drug Court and really don't, so I want to give you some information on what we have in Drug Court, just a little bit about what Drug Courts are, what we do in Champaign County, and I want to give you some numbers. There's, Drug Courts are type of problem-solving court, mental health courts, veterans courts are the same thing. Supreme Court enacted standards for problem-solving courts throughout the state of Illinois, and everybody has to be certified, and there's approximately sixty-eight Drug Courts in the state of Illinois. I want to go first as to our results, so you understand what we're talking about here. We have graduations every six months. It was June and December, now it's May and November, so that's why it's a little off, but the statistics for the last eight graduations, the last one was in November, we had eighty people graduate, those eight, youngest was twenty-one, oldest was sixty-six, twenty-six female, fifty-four male, forty-three Caucasian, thirty-five African-Americans, one Hispanic, one Asian. For the eighty of them, they spent one hundred and thirty-one years total in Drug Court, averages about nineteen and a half months per person. One started using alcohol and cannabis when they were six years old, one started alcohol or cannabis at seven, another one at eight. Our average age of first use for alcohol or cannabis is fourteen years. All started using in their teens and then moving on to cocaine, opiates, or other drugs. Not all of them, some of them just stay with alcohol or cannabis. Coming into Drug Court, these eighty people had twenty-three juvenile adjudications, four-hundred-and-seventy-two traffic tickets, two-hundred-and-ninety-five misdemeanors, and two-hundred-and-ninety-six felonies. Now, when I say that, that's what they were convicted of. That's not how many were charged. You gotta kind of double that, because a lot of times cases are dismissed when they plead guilty. So this is what they were convicted of, of those eighty coming in. Sentences included four-hundred-and-thirty-seven, community-based, such as probation or conditional discharge, straight time in jail, thirty days, sixty days, one-hundred-and-eighty days, three-hundred-and-sixty-four, ninety-eight were sentenced to that, one-hundred-and-nineteen sentences to the penitentiary among those eighty. During the one-hundred-and-thirty-one years they were in Drug Court, they had eleven petty traffic tickets, such as stop sign, no seatbelt, and two misdemeanor traffic offenses, such as driving under suspension. So we went from the one-hundred-and-nineteen penitentiary sentences, all these felonies, and during the eighty of them for the one-hundred-and-thirty-one years, this is what they did. And that's while they were in Drug Court. To graduate, a year confirmed sobriety, continuous involvement in twelve-step programs, no pending criminal charges, successful completion of all recommended treatment, the Drug Court team has to recommend them for graduation, can't have any arrest warrants if they get charged with a misdemeanor while they're in Drug Court, and you saw that a couple of them had misdemeanors, they have to be in Drug Court for six months after that case is taken care of. We want to make sure that they're changing their behavior. Involvement in a life skills program, such as being in education, high school, college, GED, employed, and almost everybody gets employed if they can work. And you've probably seen them all over town, because we have a number of graduates and some are now managers at places, or volunteer work. If they can't get a job just yet, we want them getting up in the morning like they had a job, getting out, getting noticed, doing a good job, so they can get a job. Some of them don't have a resume, this is how you build up a resume. They have to apply to graduate, include the two-page essay that they have to write, kind of letting us know that they're ready. And they have to present in front of a Drug Court team, and we have about ten-minute presentations. And I tell them, look, if you want to get a job, if you have to make a presentation to somebody, this is what life is about. Make it in front of a group of friendly faces and see what you can do and how you have to do this to start moving forward. So this is just another thing we try and get them to do, to get them ready. The team, these are the minimum people that the Supreme Court said have to be on the Drug Court team for you to have a Drug Court. If you don't have one of these, you cannot be certified as a Drug Court in the state of Illinois. Also, the Supreme Court standards say all of these people have to be at our staffings and in court. Staffings for us are ten o'clock Wednesday mornings, court starts at one. So these are the people that are necessary at a minimum to have a team. Prior to court, we staff every participant that's coming to court that day. Discussions include compliance with their treatment and counseling, drug test results from the prior week. We try and test at least two, sometimes three times a week, their employment, are they working, are they still working, what their hours are, whether there's an incentive or sanction is appropriate, and if there's gonna be any other further type of action. And we do have incentives, we have sanctions, and we'll get into that a little bit later. There's three different types of Drug Courts, ours is opposed adjudicatory, which means they plead guilty. They are placed on Drug Court probation, it's a felony probation. There's different types of courts, and they can vary in the length of time and their graduation requirements, there's no standard for that. So we started our Drug Court in March of nineteen ninety-nine. At the end of February, we will have finished twenty years in Champaign County. We take high-risk, high-need participants, many have co-occurring mental illness. High risk and high needs, we do separate assessments to make sure that they are, basically the Supreme Court says medium to high risk, so we take some upper-medium level risks. There's assessments for that, that our probation office and all probation offices use across the state as to monitoring, and then needs, basically needs, and risk isn't just prior criminal record, it's all sorts of risks that keep them in the criminal justice system. And the needs are such as mental illness, substance abuse problems, and other problems that need to be addressed. The research has shown, this is the population you want, if you take low-risk, high-needs, if you take high-risk, low-needs, you're mixing populations, and all the research has shown that those other categories do just as well on regular probation or other community-based sentences than in Drug Courts. And of course, Drug Courts, we have extra expense, because we have more professionals coming, as you saw, you want to put your resources to where the needs are, where you're gonna get a change, if you can get that change in regular probation, why are we putting them in there? And plus, you don't want to mix these groups, because if you put a high-risk, high-need with a low-risk, low-need, what we may do is make that low-risk, low-need a better criminal. We don't want to do that, we've got to keep them separate. So we take that category, which means they're a difficult group to work with, though. It's a voluntary program, nobody is forced in, they can't be a danger to the public coming in. If I can't have Amber or one of our clinicians sitting across the table talking to them, because we're afraid for their safety, then that person's not getting in Drug Court. They have to plead guilty to a felony, sentenced to Drug Court probation, and of course, as I stated, our court is every Wednesday. We staff Wednesday mornings, courts in the afternoon, like I stated. Rewards can include praise, gift cards, applause, calling them up earlier than we normally would, days off from court, they're provided for good work, completion of certain milestones in there. The research has shown rewards are very powerful, and the more you can do and the more you can have them meet certain milestones, the better your results are going to be. Sanctions, and as I, I had somebody enter Drug Court today, and I tell them, you may think it's punishment, we don't. What I say is, we're trying to change your lifestyle and your behavior. Basically, we're giving you a line to walk on. If you step off that line, we're gonna do what's necessary to put you back on that line. Sitting in my jury box and watching the rest of the afternoon is a sanction. That has been used very well, writing an essay, two or three-page essay, kind of getting them to self-reflect, public service work. We also, instead of just sanctions, there's treatment interventions, treatment adjustments, such as more substance abuse group meetings, or more sobriety-based group meetings, but we can also use curfews and other things as sanctions, and even jail. A night in jails for somebody might do them a whole lot more good, especially since our sanctions are progressive, and normally they just get a little harsher, although our sanctions go to what the behavior is. And so if they're, if they would be ready for jail at a certain time, but because of what they did, it's not worth putting them in jail, we can get that message across for another reason, that's what we do. And I tell them, they're in charge. We will sanction you if you want to be sanctioned, you follow the rules, you're not gonna be sanctioned. But that's how it's based. And if the person needs to be punished, then they're terminated from the program. We don't punish, we'll sanction, but it's not a punishment. We have had two-hundred-and-ninety-eight people graduate since our first graduation in June of two thousand. What I want to really get across to you is Drug Courts have been the most evaluated system in the criminal justice system ever. This is a twenty-eleven multi-site adult evaluation, it's a meta-analysis of a lot of different types of research that was done, and they chose certain ones. I went to the cost one, cost-benefit analysis, which starts on page two-hundred-and-twenty-eight of it, so there's a lot of information in there. But I wanted to go through a few things so you understand what Drug Court has done for our community. They identified all the costs in the Drug Court program, every cost you could think of, these researchers went through, focused on the benefit estimation, on outcomes alone, didn't count inputs that occur after the participation ends. Basically, what they did was cost-benefit analysis for the eighteen months that people are in Drug Court, were in Drug Court. They didn't do any cost-benefit for, after they graduate. So this is just for the time that they are in Drug Court, and eighteen months kind of correlates with what I've shown you, because our average stay is a little over nineteen months. So it works out real well for our Drug Court. This is, I took some quotes out of there so you can understand what they were doing, but Drug Court participants, on average, committed only seven thousand one hundred and eleven dollars worth of crime, while their control group of people, just like the people in Drug Court but were not sentenced to Drug Court, committed sixteen thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars worth of crime in that same eighteen-month period. So they estimated Drug Court results in nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars of victim crime costs prevented. Now, what does that mean for us? Well, it doesn't save Champaign County government money, but it saves the people who elected us all money, because it saves them money from their places being broken into, things being stolen, identity theft, and all sorts of stuff. Estimate that Drug Court costs reduced police arrest costs from one hundred and fifteen dollars per individual to forty-four, seventy-one dollar per participant savings, reduce costs of jails and prisons from fifty-four, forty-one to twenty-seven, sixty-eight, total savings and correction for the eighteen months following program entry of two thousand six hundred and seventy-three dollars per participant. Aggregating across savings prevented crime arrests and incarceration, Drug Courts produce an average of eleven thousand four hundred and eight dollars of benefits during that eighteen-month period per participant. In our sample, the average treatment usage among Drug Court participants, now, this you would expect, it costs more to treat Drug Court participants than people who don't want to go to treatment and who are in the same situation. So there are costs that are more for Drug Courts, such as treatment, than a regular comparison group. They found the average comparison individual cost society fourteen thousand five hundred and seventy-five during the year, and half estimated that the average Drug Court participant cost society only twelve thousand three hundred and sixty-two dollars. Doing this all out, they said Drug Court appears to prevent about eleven thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars in criminal victimizations compared to not receiving Drug Court, and that, of course, is the eighteen-month period. Reduction in use of corrections, et cetera, et cetera, but this is, this type of analysis they went through. So, Champaign County Drug Court, as of May twenty eighteen, which is the last time we updated any statistics, we had seven hundred and forty-six people sentenced to Drug Court. We've had two-hundred-and-ninety graduates as of May twenty eighteen. If you just cost eleven thousand, look at eleven thousand four hundred dollars per graduate for the duration of their participation in Drug Court, the people we graduated, which were in there the, at least the eighteen months, over a similar group means that during that time that we were in existence, we saved Champaign County, the residents of Champaign County, over three million dollars, just for the two-hundred-and-ninety graduates. There were four hundred and fifty-six people who didn't graduate, though, not all of them remained in the program for eighteen months. I've had people who left after a day, got them out of jail, put them in residential, walked in the front door, walked out the back door. I had one who walked in the front door, stayed for dinner, and then walked out the back door. But, you know, they lie to us all the time, but it's not that we're not trying. I've had others who've been there for almost two years, who have not yet graduated or didn't graduate for one reason or another, but they were still in the program, which means in the program, you saw the reduction in crime. So there's still those savings. So if you just assume that of those four hundred and fifty-six, that they averaged nine months in the program, so if you take half of the eleven thousand four hundred for those four fifty-six during the period they were in, because the research was just participants, not participants who graduated, we saved about two million five hundred thousand for the citizens of Champaign County. And I've got some recidivism stuff to hand out later for you, but we monitor one year, two years, and such, after graduation, to see what the recidivism rate is. The philosophy that we've always had in Champaign County is we're not in to get people in and out and say, yay, they graduated. My philosophy has always been, I want to change your life, I want this to be for the rest of your life. Doesn't work that way always, because we're dealing with addiction. The highest percentage of people who recidivate do it within one year, and it keeps going down. So the latest recidivism rates we did, five and a half years after graduation, we still have one hundred and eighty-four people of those two hundred and ninety that graduated as of May, who have not recidivated. No misdemeanors, no felonies, no petitions to revoke, that we've found. The multi-site evaluation showed that the average Drug Court participant committed an average of seven thousand one hundred and eleven dollars worth of crime in eighteen-month period. Well, if you take just four and a half, those five and a half years, that's three eighteen-month periods, these people have been out, if you assume that since they haven't been arrested, even the cost of when they were in Drug Court of seventy-one hundred dollars, we're not spending, that's more than a twenty thousand dollar savings per each of those graduates who hasn't recidivated in over four and a half years. So that eleven, and then you take the eleven thousand four hundred over a comparison person during the eighteen months that they were in, that they also saved, and you multiply that times three, that's thirty-four thousand dollars. If you add that together, these one hundred and eighty-four who have not recidivated in five and a half years, if you talk about fifty-four thousand per graduate, that's over nine million dollars saved, that's almost ten millions. And we're not counting the people who haven't recidivated after one year, two years, three years, or four years, and we're not counting any of those one hundred and eighty-four who graduated more than five years ago, and there's a number of them out there. So if you look at this, add it all up, that's about sixteen million dollars at a minimum that Champaign County Drug Court has saved over a comparison group of people in the same situation. I wanted to let you know that we believe this is what we're doing, and it's all based on research. And when we started doing statistics, it looked like our graduation rate was about thirty percent of the people who came in. After Amber was hired, and after we got part-time sheriff's deputy on our team, and I only asked for quarter-time one when we got a grant, and after the grant ran out, Dan Walsh said as long as he had an employee who wanted to do it, he'd keep the quarter-time on, and that's still continuing. After we got the coordinator in law enforcement, our graduation rate rose to thirty-four percent. Now, if you look at this, that thirty-four percent starts from our first graduation in two thousand, so that's not just since the thirty percent, that's over the period of time. As of our May graduation, our graduation rate for the whole eighteen years has now risen to almost forty-two percent. A lot of that I attribute to having the coordinator and having law enforcement on the team. And law enforcement is huge, it may seem counterintuitive, but when we almost lost the law enforcement after the grant was about ready to run out, we asked the participants, and a number of them wrote comments, so I could show the chiefs of police, when I kind of went to them and asked for money, they wanted that law enforcement. Basically, it helps keep them monitored, so they know somebody's watching them, and they're not going to mess up, as you would think. So they really like law enforcement. I've got multiple convicted felons walking up to an officer in uniform and asking for help and getting it. I have that officer who goes to their home, talking to them and talking to their family, because a lot of times a family doesn't know what's going on and can give them information, this is what you have to do. And in fact, our Drug Court law enforcement officer has been involved in solving certain crimes that might not have gotten done if it wasn't for that person being involved helping out. So I attribute this increase in law enforcement and having the coordinator helped out, and if you ever want to do something for Drug Court, give me more time of a law enforcement officer instead of quarter-time, and I think our graduation rates are gonna continue to go up. But who saves? There's fewer police calls, less incarceration, fewer court cases, less property damage, fewer thefts, less forgeries, which is lower insurance costs for, you know, our business owners, our homeowners in town, more families stay together, because I keep people who would normally go to the penitentiary in town, they stay here, they get cleaned up, they start working and getting a job and still wait until they're out on parole, keeps the family together a lot of times, because nobody's leaving, hopefully, and they're learning responsibility, responsibility, so the kids stay together and at home, and are starting to have a role model, so keeping families together is big. More employment and taxes paid. Like I said, I've got managers in different businesses all over town, and children, again, children staying with their family, they're out of the system. DCFS is normally out of their lives, there's been a number of women who've gone through Drug Court who have shown DCFS that they can do what they're supposed to and get their children back. I mean, these are all the results of things that we have done. And that's the presentation I provided for you. Was there anything you wanted to say? Nope. I did bring also our latest... I did bring also our latest recidivism rates, and so you can look at the numbers that we have on here, and we can pass those out. Any questions? Is it all right if I call on them, or you want to call? Oh. Okay, the head over there was first, sir.
Judge Ford, you, at one point, you only had a quarter time sheriff's deputy helping you, is that changed?
No, that's, it's still a quarter time sheriff's deputy, I would like more time.
I, I had asked the previous sheriff about that and didn't get any, any movement on it, maybe we can kind of work to talk to new sheriff.
I, I would, I would love to, I think the, the new sheriff would be very receptive to all this, but again, it's their manpower. You know, they have to have a certain amount of deputies out on the street, if they don't have the manpower, it can't happen, and even my deputy, if there's an emergency call, he's got to go out, he can't come in. So there, there's a lot of dynamics there, but would I love to have one? Yes, because I think it would help out everybody. Somebody else have a question? Yes, sir.
Thank you for coming and giving that presentation. I wanted to ask, I wanted to make sure it was clear, you, you said in order to be eligible for this program, you must plead guilty to a felony?
Yes, sir.
Now, is that for first time offenders also?
Well, we don't take first time offenders, and most first time offenders would not meet the high risk, high needs-
Okay.
-that we need. Most of, you know, as you could tell, a lot of them have been through the system. I have people whose records, the one I took in today, record started in nineteen seventy-four and he went to the penitentiary. But, you know, they're, they're getting old enough and they, they want to change, and sometimes the older's a little bit more motivated, although I've had a twenty-one-year-old graduate too, so-
Okay.
-you know, but we, we take, we try and take the ones that we, we need to under the standards set by the Supreme Court.
Do you guys have a number on how many of those defendants have, uh, public defenders versus, you know, private attorneys?
Uh, there's more, do we have numbers on that? There's more public defender clients, but today, the one I brought in was a private attorney, and the private, there's a number of private attorneys, in fact, there's some public defenders, prior public defenders, and they're now in private practice, and they get them in. But it's, it just depends, I'll take anybody who wants to-
Okay.
-who qualifies and wants to be in.
Okay, I mean, I just want to make sure, like, I, I would hate for, you know, the defendants to be more or less copping out to this for, you know, for the sake of picking the poison.
Well, the, the thing about it is, and a lot of attorneys will tell their, their clients, look, uh, it's easier to go to the penitentiary, you've been to the penitentiary before, you can do the time, but this judge is going to be in your life for two, maybe more years than that, and if you really mess up, you can still get sentenced to the penitentiary, what do you want to do? Again, it's a voluntary program, but I have a number of people who want it. Now, some see it as a way, oh, they've beaten probation before, they can, you know, but for two-year period or so that they're seeing me every week, you catch them. And I have some people who came in who thought they were just going to scam the system and ended up graduating, because all of a sudden they started realizing, life is better now.
Now, now, what's the, are there any numbers on, you said it's a nineteen-month program, like, are defendants taking that in contrast to, like, five-year sentences, ten-year sentences, career criminal sentences, like?
The, I can't take people who aren't eligible for probation, but I have taken people who are eligible for up to fifteen years in the penitentiary.
Okay.
Some are one, three, up to three years, some are up to six years, some are up to ten years, some are up to fourteen, but, you know, they'll come in, and a number, like I said, a number have been to the penitentiary before. They're not afraid of the penitentiary, they know that they can handle it if they go. The question is, do they want to spend the time with me? Because getting away from addiction is a very difficult thing to do, and this is probably the hardest thing any of them have ever done in their life. And I have people who have been using for twenty, thirty years, so it's not like they just started last week, and it's a very powerful force, and they're very comfortable with their addiction. So it's, it's, it's difficult, it's not easy for them to do, and it takes a lot of people, a lot of work together to just, I've got to build trust. The, the research has shown a lot of people that come to us have had prior trauma in their life, they don't want to talk about it, they don't trust the police, they don't trust their attorneys, they don't trust the judges, and if we can't get them to trust us, then they will not get, we can't get to the reason that they're using in the first place, and there's nothing we can do. So if you walk into my court from day one, it's different than any other felony court they've walked into, and I treat it differently, and I talk to them more, because from day one, I've got to earn trust, because if we don't, we're spinning our wheels.
Thank you.
John?
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate you and your team for a job well done, and I want to encourage all board members to go to graduation, I've, I've been a couple of times, and, and when you go to graduation and hear these people talk how it changed their lives and talk to their families afterwards, it's really, not, not that you'd need more validation, but the numbers are great, but I really want to encourage the board members to go to graduation, it's very powerful.
We do send out invitations as to graduation, there will be a change from now on, because there's no more Urbana Civic Center, but we have talked to Rosecrans, and they have a big auditorium room where they're going to allow us to have our graduation, and the next one will be after we've completed twenty years of drug court, so it may be a little bit more of a celebration. I can't guarantee on how many will graduate, but we'll have a little bit more of a celebration, because if we have one ready, we'll graduate that person. Yeah, we'll have more than one. Yes, sir.
Yeah, you mentioned twelve-step programs and sobriety-based treatment, do you also use, like, medical evidence-based treatment, like-
Yes, medication-assisted treatment, we do. I was able to talk Carl into donating some money for a medication called Vivitrol, which is naltroxone in a shot form, which sits on the receptors in the brain, but we also have had people on methadone and people on Suboxone, we work with them, we also, we get releases, and we have MOUs with people who will be involved with it, so we can get all the information, so we can kind of share the information, but no, we don't turn down anybody on medication-assisted treatment until we find out that they're starting to abuse it, and then we work with the provider to, to get a handle on that. I've never turned down anything that's going to help these people succeed, and there's research that shows that for certain populations, religious-based treatment is better, and if they want to go, fine, anything that's going to help them, we're not going to turn them away.
I, I guess, sort of, along that line, do you feel like there are people who are in the community who would benefit from this program who are not eligible under the current requirements?
Well, yes, but the current requirements are set by the Supreme Court, basically, and the, the thing about it is, is I need, the research has shown that the most important person, now, everybody on the team is very important, and it's, we treat it as a team, but it's the judge where they have to come in front of every week that is really very important to them, so if they're not coming to court for certain reasons, and you don't have that hook where, because you got to get them in the beginning, they think, I got to come, then you're not going to be as successful.
Thank you.
Everything we do is evidence-based, it's all research-based, I don't want to, you know, go out there and do things that aren't going to work. Yes, ma'am?
Is cognition work still involved with drug court using CBT?
Absolutely, absolutely. Just wanted to check. We've, we used to start people with cognition works, which is cognitive skills training, but there's moral recognition therapy, which they do at the jail now too, which is a little bit more basic, and it will go to a lot of people that cognition works won't work with, and we start with MRT first, and when they finish MRT, we now go to cognition works, and we've just started a new program, and I'm starting with the women's population, because it really works well from what the research shows, called Seeking Safety, that works with people with trauma backgrounds, and so I wanted to start with the women first, and I've got, normally, when I reach out, because, you know, we don't want to spend, have a lot of money, I have somebody who worked in the probation office and from the state's attorney's office who worked with victims before, who read the book and said she'll do it. So we, we still have to pay her, but we got somebody we know, we trust, and we don't have to pay a lot to get that done, so we just started it this month. So anything that works, that we can afford, we're going to take advantage of. Anybody else? Wait, yes, sir.
You mentioned earlier, I think the term you use is pre-adjudicary, is that the other word?
Pre-adjudi- there's, there's, there's post-adjudicatory, which is us, they flee guilty, there's pre-adjudicatory, and that's how a lot of the courts started nationally. The research has shown the post works better, but pre-adjudicatory, people can flee guilty, but they're not sentenced, or they sign some sort of contract, and so they haven't been convicted or been involved yet, and the contract will be, we're not even going to charge you if you complete this. There, there are still some, there's a few in Illinois, the research really doesn't say it's that cost-effective, which is why they're falling out of favor, and that's why the Supreme Court said if you want to be certified as a drug court, you take this other population.
So, so i- is it, you say it's required to do post?
Well, it's not requi- well, in Illinois, if you want to be certified as a drug court, then you're post, then you, you take high risk, high needs. If you have a pre-adjudicatory and you want to take the high risk, high needs, you can, but most don't do it that way, because it's a different population than, than the other populations, and you really need a more of a hook on them than they haven't even been convicted yet.
Okay. What, what role exactly does the deputy play?
Well, one, they're in court, they're seen, they know what's going on with these people, they'll go to their home, a lot of types, you know, some of the comments we got from people when we were about to lose is that gives me support outside of being in drug court, keeps the riffraff out of my apartment complex, and a lot of people that are in there, if they have housing, don't live in the best neighborhoods, but the officer comes by, doesn't arrest anybody, doesn't roust anybody, just goes and talks to them, talks to the family, it helps earning trust and building trust. We've had a number of people go and even in court or outside of court, go and ask about orders of protection and other things that they need to do. We had one person who was working and not getting paid, and the officer kind of mediated that, and the person got paid, but, you know, there's, there's all these things, and a lot of these people don't have a lot of experience on how to handle some of these problems, and the officer just goes to their home, knows everybody, they trust them, and we get more things done. And so it's, it's a real trust issue, and it's, it's your community-based policing that a lot of areas are trying to get to that don't have. And, and again, it, the officer now sees how these people live and can come and come back to us and say, this is what this person needs. So i- it, it's a two-way street, too, and the officers that have done this have founded a different type of policing, but they find it a nice change, and it's something that they haven't really been involved with before, and they're very interested in it. And I've, I've talked to officers in other communities who you know will collect clothing or stuff for the people there, I mean, there's a lot of trust, but it's, it's human relations.
You mentioned earlier that you think if you increase the amount of time with the deputy, it could improve the program, is there any other things that you think could improve your program?
There's, there's two things I really need. I need more deputy time, and I want the ability to drug test on the weekends. And there's communities all over the country where they can do some of the weekend stuff because they do go to the jail and test, but if we don't have enough people in corrections over there, that can't happen. We are talking to Rosecrans, there's, they can't do it right now with their setup, but they're talking about hiring somebody who might be able to test on the weekends and do our people too, so it's all in play, but the two biggest things we need are more deputy time and the ability to test on the weekends, because we have some people who know, okay, if I test on Thursday, I'm probably not going to be tested on Friday, won't be tested Saturday or Sunday, and they, they do that, and we, we try and figure that out and try and strategize for that, but we can't always get it.
How often do you guys test?
Minimum of twice a week.
And it's random, so one week they may get one, you, sometimes one week they'll get three, other times, you know, it just depends, they'll get two, and it's not like it's Thursday and, and Tuesday, it's, you know, we can do Thursday and Friday, sometimes we'll do the next Monday.
How much notice do they get?
They call on a random, the morning of, the day that they have to be tested.
Yeah, there's a random caller, random caller that we have for them.
Or they go to treatment and they see their, their numbers.
Because sometimes we test at Rosecrans, sometimes we bring them to probation.
All right, thank you.
We try to let them.
And, and of course, the, the, one other thing is that I tell the clinicians, if that person comes in and they weren't supposed to test, but you think they need to be tested, test them. Yes, sir.
Yeah, first off, like, Mr. Rector, just thank you for the work you do, and it's a tremendous benefit to this community. This is just a kind of a wild thought, and I don't know if it would even be able to work out, just the idea of maybe if Urbana and/or Champagne could give a quarter officer, I mean, would that even-
That was brought up by the chief-
I don't know if it would even be able to work out.
No, because, again, we're talking about building trust.
Okay.
And, and we need somebody who deals with these, the same people over and over again-
The same person, so you'd have, yeah, okay.
So you can build that trust.
It wouldn't work with, unless you could somehow maybe give individual people a certain officer, but I don't, that probably would be hard to work.
And the officers have to come to the staff, and so I'm not too sure all of the different departments are going to send somebody to staff.
Yeah, I was gonna, like I said, I didn't know if it would even be able to work.
Oh, yeah, and, and the sheriff's deputy seems like a natural fit, because they are all over the county and even in, in the cities every once in a while, so it's, it's much more of a natural fit. Yes, sir.
To that idea, because it, obviously, if we're trying to pool resources, if we're talking to the community police departments, though, about the benefit that we're all seeing community and county-wide, is there, might there be a way to even prod them a little bit for funds?
Which is why about ten years ago, I went to the chiefs of police and I said, let's do this, and they said, oh, great idea, we don't have any money, which is why after we got the grant and after one year was over, I went to the chiefs of police with these comments and said, this is the results we're getting, can we do that? It's a good idea, but we can't afford it, so then Sheriff Walsh agreed that if he had somebody who wanted to do it, he'd do it. So I just, you know, I asked, I couldn't get any agreement, but that was my first thought, everybody benefits, why not see if we could pool some resources?
There's no more questions, I think that's it. Thanks a lot for coming out.
Thank you.
All right, we have the monthly reports from the various departments, there's no objection, those will be placed on file, there's no other business, and there's not a chair's report, so that's it.
Okay, our next committee report to come from the policy personnel and appointment from Dr. Young.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Vice Chair Lorraine Cowat, you're doing an excellent job, by the way. One, under policy, personnel, and appointment, new business, appointment, reappointment, A, a list of appointment expiring in twenty nineteen, information only. B, under the sheriff appointment, the policy committee is recommending the approval of Cynthia E. Cunningham, Democrat, to the Sheriff Mayor Commission for the term twelve-one-twenty, twelve-one-twenty-eighteen to eleven-thirty-twenty-twenty-four. I so move and need a second motion. Any discussions? All in favor by saying aye? Any nay? Motion pass. C, under the county executive appointment, the policy committee is recommending the approval of Ryan Elwell, current ZBA member, to the zoning board of appeal chair for the term one-one-twenty-nineteen to eleven-thirty-twenty-twenty-two. So who's second? You got it? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor by saying aye? Any nay? Motion pass. D, under rural transit advisory group, the policy committee is recommending the approval of Laurel Lawson to the rural, to the rural transit advisory group for the term 1-1-2019 to 12-31-2020. I so move and need a second motion. All second, any discussion? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nay? Motion pass. E, under Eastern Illinois Economic Development Authority Board, the policy committee is recommending the approval of Mitchell Swim to the Eastern Illinois Economic Authority Board for the term 1-21-2019 to 1-19-2025. I so move and need a second. Okay? Any discussion? Get them. All in favor? All in favor by saying aye? Any nay? Motion pass. Two, county clerk, A, December 2018, and semi-annual report, the policy committee has accepted these reports and placed them on file. Three, county executive, A, monthly AR report, November and December 2018, the policy committee has accepted this report and placed it on file. B, under content, under content evaluation committee, recommendation for the circuit clerk position, the policy committee is recommending the approval of a financial manager. I so move and need a second.
I, I just have a comment, and I, I, I think it's probably okay if we just continue with this, but again, I want to bring up, so, we're doing voting differently than we did before. So, before what it was, is in the cow, that the person read the agenda item, and then, and I know we did this in the last cow, we did the same thing in the last cow, but how it used to be was, in the cow, you would read the agenda item, whoever's the chair, and then some other person would first and second it. And so, we did this the same way in that special meeting we had with finance, and that's why I kept raising my hand and saying this isn't how we hadn't done it. So, just, I don't know, maybe at some point we need some clarification, because I, this, I just want us to recognize we are doing this. And then, this way is how we did it in the full board meeting, right? So, but, and, and so, but to be fair, this is how we did it at the last meeting as well, which is why I kept raising my hand in the last meeting, but this is, I just want us to acknowledge that this is sort of different, right?
So, we went through this at, at policy, and with, with the new county executive, and this was the way that she presented that according to the rules, as vice chair, and his understanding was that's the way that the new rules were, that he could recommend that the committee, and then take the second. So, anyway, that's, that, I'm just saying, that's what we discussed at our, at our pre-meeting with, with the new county executive, and that was our understanding, that that's the correct, that that's the way we're gonna do it. I'm, I'm not saying that's correct, but that was our understanding, is that true, Charles?
Yes, that is true, yep, that's true.
Yeah, I, I mean, my understanding is that Charles is chairing this portion of the meeting, and that the chair shouldn't make a motion according to Robert's rules. Um, it's one of these things that's probably not important until it's really important, so, you know.
This is our first cow. Our, previous we've had, other than the organizational, that was even a board, all our previous meetings have been board, actual board meetings, so this is our first cow.
Yeah, so, so I, I mean, I, I think, um, like, it makes sense for, for Charles to, for example, read the item, ask someone for a motion, and ask for a second, I think that's, that would be the correct way to do it.
Well, this is what we agreed on, to do it.
This is the way we went through the, the rules with the, with the new, with the new county executive, so it's not like Charles and John made this stuff up.
Right.
So, we can, we, you know, for the next cow, we could get our, uh, i's dotted and t's crossed, but, uh, this is what we'd worked on, so.
Just as a, just a real quick, just because I am such a nerd and literally teach Robert Rules of Order, I just, this isn't, right, this, I don't think this follows Robert Rules of Order, which I don't know if that, I, I don't know if that ultimately matters, but just, it, it doesn't.
If I may, I agree with Stephanie, this doesn't follow the rules. I, I think the executives here, and maybe if you could explain why, uh, we don't want to follow the rules in the cow, but, uh, the normal course of events, and I only speak to this because I was chair of the ZBA for eight years, was the chair could only entertain a motion, and someone would have to make that in another second. And that's the format I'm familiar with, and so, I was sort of sitting here a little confused myself, so, thank you for bringing it up.
I'm in the process, still trying to learn all of this, so, wow.
Yes.
Oh, Darlene?
The question, the question would be whether Ms. Coward is actually chairing the meeting, and, and she's turned over this part of the meeting to the areas of responsibility, but they're not actually the commit, they're not, there's not a committee, they're not actually a committee, they're an area of responsibility, and so technically, they're not chairing the meeting. Um, but that's, that's up to you guys, if you want to do it differently, that's fine. So, anybody that's at this meeting could make the motion, and in this case, we were just, I just suggested that the person make the motion since they're already reading it, but that's up to you guys, if you want to change that back.
Yeah, I would, I would argue that if you are reading and then calling on, I mean, so far, we haven't had any discussion, but if you are reading and calling on people, you're chair, you are chairing that portion of the meeting, I, I would, in any understanding of the word chairing, I would think.
Okay, well, I, well, I turn the meeting over to the committee chair, and, and that's the way we usually do a turnover to the committee chair, and although sometimes the chair of the county board would call on the people for certain committees, he would call on the, on the people, but not for all the committees.
The only, the only discussion about it is that there, there aren't, these people aren't committees, the policies, the policy and personnel is not a committee, it's part of the committee of the whole as an area of responsibility, so it's not a committee unto itself. That's just how your bylaws read. But, again, however you want to do it.
If I may, then, who gives the chair report of this area of responsibility as it's listed on the agenda? The chair of policy personnel and appointment. Right. Which is the chair.
The chair right there. So, he's technically chair.
Following the rules, then, they can't make the motion. We're sort of chasing our own tail here.
I'm willing to switch it.
I, I don't think anybody's, like, thinking that anything nefarious is going on here, it's just that making sure that nothing can come back on us. None of this is particularly earth-moving stuff, and I don't think anybody's gonna come back and try, but like, if everybody is just interested in keeping it consistent and following the rules that we're supposed to be following, yeah, I don't think anybody's like, how dare you, or how dare you do anything like this, it's just, if we're gonna follow it correctly so that nothing ever comes back on us, I mean, I don't want us to get sued.
Again, I'm not portending that there's anything nefarious happening here, but there, as Pranjal said, this isn't important until it is important, and so, it may be good practice to stay in the habit for that one in a hundred times that it is important.
Yes.
Sorry.
Yeah, I, I assure you, when we get to finance, I'm gonna ask for somebody to make the motion at the, at the cow, and when we go to the full board meeting, then you would move, and that's why when we did the first special meeting, that was, that was final action, that's why I made the motion and asked for a second, or, or the county executive asked for the second, because she was actually chairing the meeting, I made the motion. I think that's the way it's always been done, I think that follows Robert's rules, um, because this is a committee meeting, and if you're a chair of responsibility, you are the chair, so you should ask for somebody. Again, I don't, I'm not saying this is nefarious, but I assure you, on a finance portion, I'm gonna ask for somebody because there are things there that are, that people will come back on, so I'm gonna do it that way.
Okay. So, can I keep, go ahead?
Uh, just a real quick point, I mean, a lot of this does seem kind of nitpicky because these aren't important issues, but, uh, less than two years ago, we got sued for not following Robert's rules, so I think it is important that we do follow proper procedure.
Okay.
And, and if we get it sorted out on the non-controversial stuff, then, you know, it's a lot easier to do that than when we, we actually disagree on the content.
All righty, we're gonna keep it moving this way, next time we'll change it. Where I'm at? Lord Jesus. Okay, here we go. At the final, where I'm at. B, under job content evaluation committee, recommendation for the circuit clerk position, the policy committee is recommending the approval of a financial manager. I so move, second? Who's second? Any discussions? All in favor by saying aye? Any nay? Motion pass. And with the account clerk position, there is no action. B, other business, does anybody have any business before the board? Okay, okay, seeing there is none. C, from the policy chair report, one, the county executive appointment expiring February 28, 2019, information only, Lincoln Legacy Committee, one vacancy term, 3-1-2019 to Designation of item to be placed on the consent agenda. Do we want to keep this agenda process the same? Put what?
For the consent agenda, do we need, uh, uh, 1B, I could use a little help here. 1B, CDE.
Which one?
And then 3AB, or 3B.
Got you. So, is that it? Okay, just conclude all my information, Madam Vice Chair, Coward.
Thank you. Okay, the next order of business will be the finance committee, Mr. Cow.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Finance, item A1, new business, budget amendment transfers. A is budget amendment 18-00076, fund 080 general corporate to department 042, the coroner. Increased appropriations $16,375, increased revenue $7,478. The reason is to cover the end-of-the-year former employee benefit payout and part-time staff additional coverage. This will reimburse autopsy line for fees collected for the lab expenses of, of other counties and additional Champaign County autopsy expenses through the end of December. Is there a motion? Mr. McGuire, is there a second? Mr. Ingram, is there discussion on this topic? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Item B, budget amendment 18-00077, fund 685 specialty courts to department 031, circuit court, increased appropriations $2,000, increased revenues $2,000. The reason is increased revenue was received and will be used to cover increased drug court expenditures, expenditures. Is there a motion? Mr. Clemmons, is there a second? Mr. Young, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Item C, budget amendment 18-00081, fund 621 state's attorney drug forfeitures to department 041 state's attorney, increased appropriations $10,000, increased revenue none, it's from the fund balance. The reason is an increase in appropriations for end-of-year expenses, increase will come from the fund balance, is there such a motion? Mr. Clifford, is there a second? Mr. Esri, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Item D, budget amendment 18-00082, fund 080 general corporate, uh, fund, uh, to department 041 state's attorney, increased appropriations $1,831, increased revenue $1,831. The reason is increase in appropriations to match state-approved and funded increase to the state's attorney's salary. We do have the state's attorney here, if anybody has questions, is there such a motion? Ms. Fortato, is there a second? Mr. Patterson, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Motion passes. Item E, budget transfer 18-00008, fund 080 general corporate to department 041 state's attorney, the total amount is 2,300, or $23,918. The reason is transfer of personnel appropriations to pay for personnel expenses in fund 675 due to a loss of grant funding. Is there such a motion? Mr. McGuire, is there a second? Mr. Young, discussion? Ms. Fortato?
Um, I just, I know we've brought this up in the past, but I'd like to bring it up again, that I think that this is a case that indicates, um, that it would be beneficial to the county to have a grant coordinator, somebody who's watching deadlines of grants, who's working with departments across the board, and who's helping take some of the onus of some of these grants off of them, um, and doing research. I think that's the kind of position that would pay for itself quickly, um, it's a position that I, it kind of blows my mind that we don't have in the county. Um, I know Rosencrans does a lot of our grants, but, and I know, you know, we have different elected officials who are responsible for grants within their own shop, but I do think that there's some coordination that could be done to, to make sure sort of this kind of loss of grant funding doesn't go, um, and to take some of the burden off of the elected officials and to coordinate across, you know, some grants will use, have people from different shops. So, I know we've mentioned that before, uh, but going forward in the budget process, I do think that's a position that would make a lot of sense.
Further discussion? Mr. Harper?
Yeah, is this grant no longer available, is that why?
Uh, would you have the state's attorney, Ms. Reitz, if you would come respond to
Thank you. Um, I absolutely agree with Ms. Fortato about the need for some, someone whose job it is to assist us with grants. In this particular situation, this was a grant that we had for many, many years, and every year it was basically renewed, um, and then it changed, and we had to completely reapply, and they wouldn't and couldn't, I was told, tell us exactly when it was going to be released, um, and so, when we found out, we were a day late, um, and we put all the paperwork in, but, um, my colleague in Kane County similarly, um, applied, reapplied essentially for a grant that they had had many, many years, timely, and didn't get their funding. From what I saw, um, what was, what is being funded, what was being funded by this particular grant, uh, was community-based organizations, so here locally, our community domestic violence organization, sexual assault victim organization, races, received significant funding out of this particular grant, uh, that we didn't get, that we were told to, um, watch the website, watch the website, watch the website, which we do regularly, pretty much daily, and it hasn't come back yet as an opportunity for us, so I, you know, I can't tell you whether it's going to come back for us or not, uh, but at this point, we're continuing to watch the ICJ, ICJIA website, um, to see if, if this particular victim, um, support grant returns as a possibility for us, and we certainly would reapply, um, but at this point, it's not there.
Any other discussion? As I understand, this is, this is a statutory position, is that correct?
Well, it's a position that we have, we have statutory requirements as far as victim services go. We have requirements as far as notification, support, assistance of victims, crime victims. And this is a position that helps us fulfill those statutory requirements. So, yeah, I would say it's, it's absolutely needed.
Any other? Mr. Store.
Who, which group is providing this grant, please?
The grant, the grant that we had previously is monitored by the ICJIA, Illinois Criminal Justice Information Authority. And they are basically a state agency that supports and monitors grants that come in, that are federal grants generally, so it's federal funds that they're responsible for determining who's going to get them and then monitoring them.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item F. Budget amendment eighteen dash zero 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 eighty-six. Fund six ten, working cash, to department zero two six, county treasurer. Increased appropriations, thirty-seven thousand eight hundred, or thirty-seven thousand, thirty-seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Increased revenue, three thousand seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Reason, we earned more interest than we anticipated in the budget. Is there such a motion? Mr. Clemmons, second. Mr. Tinsley, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G, budget amendment nineteen dash zero 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 five. Fund zero seven five, regional planning commission, department eight seventy, weatherization, NICOR. Increased appropriations, eighty-five thousand, increased revenue, eighty-five thousand. The reason is to accommodate a new contract with NICOR that supplements the Illinois Home Weatherization Assistance Program. This contract will provide enhanced weatherization services in northern Champaign County, including insulation, air sealing, and health and safety measures for an additional ten income-eligible households. Is there a motion? Mr. Thorson, second. Mr. Summers, discussion. Mr. Store.
Is that a minimum of ten eligible households, or, or only, or up to ten?
I think we have folk. Okay, we don't, I guess we don't have anybody here that can answer that. As I understand, it's for up to ten, but we could certainly find that out and get that answered by the time we get to the board meeting. Other discussion? All those in favor, Ms. Fortato.
I, I guess I would just say, in other discussion, I would like to say again how helpful memos are. And when they're not included, that sometimes we don't know as much as we maybe could know. So just the encouragement of memos that have words on them that go along with the financial charts that we get, I want to say that again.
Yes, in our agenda meeting, we go through all these one by one, and we try to anticipate your questions, and we don't always do a good job. Obviously, we didn't on this one. So. Okay, all those in favors, Mr. McGuire.
I think the cost of the weatherization would determine how much money they would spend, and that would be difficult to know whether it would be ten or twelve. I mean, if the job was smaller, they could possibly do more, but that'd be a hard question to answer before they started jobs.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. I will, I will suggest that we keep this off the consent agenda so that we can bring that question up at the board, so. Item H, budget amendment nineteen dash zero 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 six. Fund zero seven five, regional planning commission, department eight forty-seven, permanent supportive housing, physical disabilities even. Increased appropriations are twenty-six thousand, increased revenue, twenty-six thousand. The reason is to accommodate alternating program years to provide subsidized rental assistance for low-income disabled adults. Moved by Mr. Ingram, second by Mr. Patterson, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item I, budget amendment nineteen dash zero 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 seven. Fund zero seven five, regional planning commission, department eight forty-eight, Champaign County, safety forecasting tool. Increased appropriations, one hundred and eighty-four thousand two hundred dollars. Increased revenue, one, one hundred and eighty-four thousand two hundred dollars. Reason, provides for the development of a safety forecasting tool for estimating future crashes and projections of average daily traffic using the travel demand model. This tool will provide a platform to select and prioritize projects on safety, guide corridor and intersection safety enhancements, and support cost-benefit analysis of future projects. It will be a data-driven tool, which one will require geometric information of intersections and corridor segments? Is there a motion? Mr. Vachaspati, second. Mr. Patterson, any discussion on this one? Mr. Esri.
I'd say this one's probably the one that Rita's here for, I would imagine. So she could probably speak towards this one, I would assume, if somebody has a question.
Somebody has a question. Seeing, seeing none.
Much of this, I don't know what I just read. So if she could just explain what it is and how it would be used and where it would be used and what that would look like.
Go ahead and come on up, Rita, please.
Hi, good evening. What was the question?
Just a little bit more elaboration on what the tool is and what it'll do, why it's effective.
Currently, we have a travel demand model in place for Champaign County and for Champaign-Urbana. The travel demand model is able to estimate future traffic volumes in different roadways. The idea of this tool is to use the travel demand model to be able to predict crashes based on the geometric conditions of the roadway, of the intersections into the future, that when we are making improvements or suggesting improvement, we can test the different improvements and estimate the future number of crashes. But this is a tool that will be developed using our current travel demand model. It's not something that is out there. We'll have to do a lot of research to incorporate that into our current travel demand model.
Other questions?
The forecasting that this will do will be available to other county departments. I'm thinking of the zoning board when we do, when I did things there, we used old ADT data.
Sometimes we work with the zoning department when doing traffic impact studies to estimate future traffic volumes. But it will depend on the type of roadway, because the travel demand model doesn't contain all the roadways in Champaign County, just the most important ones. Then it will depend on the location of that, of that zoning case to determine future traffic volumes.
Right, but it's available to them.
Yes, we have worked with Young on that.
Other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item J, fund eight five zero, sorry, budget amendment nineteen dash zero 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 eight. Fund eight fifty, geographic information system joint venture, department one eleven, operations and administration. Increased appropriations, forty-two thousand. Increased revenue, twenty-seven thousand. The reason is for acquisition of LIDAR through USGS three-D elevation program. The majority of the expenditure to, to be paid with pass-through funds from the member agencies as reflected in the requested revenue increases. Funds from the CCGISC fund balance will be used for the remainder of the expenditure. Is there a motion? Mr. Store, second. Mr. Patterson, discussion. Mr. Store.
Yes, I noticed that Ms. Lea Riley is here, and I'd like to ask do we know yet what the posting or spacing of the LIDAR is going to be for, for the county?
Yeah, the majority of the county will be a four point, four points per square meter. However, Champaign and Urbana have chosen to increase their point cloud density to eight points per square meter. So there'll be a hundred and fifteen mile area that'll be at eight points per square meter.
I'm very pleased to hear this, because we are a fairly flat county, and the additional information will be very useful, not only for flood plain mapping, but also to the agricultural community that require, that, that looks at microtopography as part of their precision agriculture. If we can, if we can, anything that we can do to increase that, that spacing, to, to get more points per square meter is, is something that I would press the heck for, including anything, anything that amounts to legal. Or comes close.
Other discussion? Mr. Vachaspati.
Yeah, just to follow, what's the current, in, in previous years, what's the density of the?
The last time we acquired LIDAR was in two thousand and eight. It's very expensive. We're only paying a small portion of it. So currently, the two thousand and eight point cloud density is, if we're lucky, two points per square mile. I said meter, I meant mile. No, I meant meter, you're right. Per square, per square meter, yeah, sorry. I just confused myself.
Other discussion, other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Okay, item two, we are at the yeah, we're at the treasurer's report, the treasurer's report from November and December. I would ask that the treasurer, are they on file yet? They have not been on, placed on file yet, so we can't accept them, because they're not on file. Auditor, monthly reports for November, December, are they available on the website? They are, so we shall accept those. Animal control, item four. Request approval of shelter medicine agreement between the Board of Trustees at the University of Illinois and the Champaign County Animal Control. This was in your packet. Do we have some, I don't think we've got anybody, nobody here from animal control. Is there such a motion? Mr. Vachaspati, second. Mr. McGuire, discussion. The agreement is in the packet. I mean, it's an intergovernmental agreement, so. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item five. Sheriff, request approval of an intergovernmental agreement for cost-sharing of extended warranty for national ballistic information network equipment, technical support, and training. Is there such a motion? Mr. Patterson, second. Mr. Ingram. The sheriff is here, if we've got questions. That was a mouthful. Discussion, Mr. Vachaspati.
Yeah, if the sheriff could just briefly explain what this is.
Good evening. So, the NIBIN system is, especially with all the violent crime that we've been having in our community over the last couple of years, the NIBIN system is something that will allow us to better analyze, for an example, if we have shell casings or some kind of evidence from a violent crime, a gun-related crime specifically. It will better allow us to analyze that and then lead to a suspect. We do, I believe, currently have the ability to do this, but it's through the Springfield Crime Lab, and so backlog, and, and this will allow us, City of Champaign got a grant for this, and so they're asking us to help with the extended warranty. And with that, we're also going to get access, we're going to have a deputy or investigator who's trained on it as well. And it's very important to me, at least, is even though we don't have very much violent crime in the county itself, criminals don't stop where the city lines stop, and we have several areas within the, the city areas that are county jurisdiction that these can very well move over to, so.
Other questions or discussion on this topic? Thank you, Sheriff, appreciate it. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item six, county executive, FY general, FY twenty eighteen, general corporate budget, fund budget projection and budget change reports. Ms. Ogden, please.
You actually have a copy of this report in your packet tonight, because the meeting's a little later than normal, so I was able to get this completed in time to enclose it in the packet. Although this is a December report, I just want to make sure that you understand this is not the final report for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, as the county will still continue to receive revenues and expenditures and post those to the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen budget through February. Starting on the revenue page, I want to point out a few things, and I know that this is the first report that some of you have received, so I'll go through this in a little more detail than normal. In the property tax line, you can see the budget variance of a negative five hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. This is predominantly due to the county preparing its property tax levy to capture new growth revenue in a potentially favorable ruling in the hospital property tax exemption case. There was no ruling in that case, and therefore, prior to the board of review closing the books in two thousand and eighteen, so these properties were not added to the tax rolls, and therefore, they, the county will not receive additional revenue in fiscal year two thousand and eighteen. This case is currently before the circuit court. In January, this was heard by the circuit court, so we have prepared the two thousand and nineteen levy in the same manner. However, if there is no ruling, or if there's an unfavorable ruling, then we will be in the same situation in fiscal year two thousand and nineteen. Under licenses and permits, the non-business license and permit revenues, the increase of five hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars is predominantly related to a strong real estate market. And the recorder's office has indicated that there were numerous large commercial transactions in two thousand and eighteen that resulted in very strong revenues that came in for document stamps. However, please keep in mind that the county has to turn around and distribute two-thirds of those revenues to the state for the purchase of document stamps, so there is an expenditure impact as well. Under state shared revenue, sales taxes, including PPRT and use taxes, have been very strong in fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, so you can see those are coming in, and it anticipated to come in over budget. However, income tax is expected to come in under budget. And that's predominantly due to the fact that the legislature had implemented a one-time ten percent reduction in income tax revenues that we expected to sunset, because it was a one-time cut. However, the legislature, instead of letting that sunset, However, the legislature, instead of letting that, um, sunset, extended it for a second twelve months at five percent. So that's why, um, the county's receiving less revenues for income tax. In this line, that cut will extend into the first six months of two thousand and nineteen as well.
Do we anticipate then it will finally fade into the sunset?
That's the hope. You can start talking to your state legislatures about that. Um, local government revenue, the, uh, increase for, of ninety-one thousand is predominantly due to a, an additional TIF surplus distribution the county received from the City of Champagne. So that was seventy-seven thousand dollars. Um, we were informed that we would receive that final distribution last year, two thousand and seventeen. However, then surprised, they said, oh, due to the way the timing was and the calculation and the start and the end of the TIF, that there was a, um, additional distribution that we were unaware of and therefore didn't put in our budget. And the difference is also, um, additional TIF surplus that was received from the City of Mohammed as well. And then fees and fines and forfeitures, um, this is something that, you know, we have, uh, indicated that there has been some volatility and they, year-to-date, um, they are trending, the collection of these are trending higher than where we were this point last year. However, as those of you who have been on the board for some time have seen, that fees and fines, um, revenues have been decreasing year over year for many years. So, we're still nowhere near, um, the level that we were in prior fiscal years. I will say, in the fees line, even though we're projecting that we're going to, um, bring in less money that was in the budget, there are, uh, some drivers of increased performance and some of those are related to, uh, planning and zoning fees for the solar farms. And as we have also talked about for the Circuit Clerk's Office, the, uh, electronic citation filing options that have also generated increased revenues there as well. Um, at this point, the projection for, um, the budget variance is four hundred and forty thousand dollars over the originally approved budget for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen. On the expenditure side, um, we do anticipate underspending the personnel budget. For commodities, I will point out the purchase document stamp line, the additional three hundred and fifty-eight thousand is that impact that I mentioned earlier with the increased collections for the revenue stamps. In the services line, we do anticipate underspending that line. However, I want to mention, and it is included in this line, the, um, county board did, um, authorize RSM, which is a, a nursing home vendor, to be paid directly from this line. So that is, um, also included in that line. And finally, uh, the transfers to the nursing home fund. Upon preparation of this report, that transfer total, which included forgiveness of the five hundred thousand dollar loan to two hundred and fifty thousand dollar loans, and also forgiveness of the boiler loan, which is two hundred and twenty-six thousand. And this also included a transfer of a hundred and one thousand dollars that was made to the nursing home and ninety-one thousand, um, approximately dollars that was made to the nursing home to, um, take care of some, uh, vendor, uh, payments that needed to be brought current. So, after the prior meeting that we just had with the approval of the transfer of one point nine eight million dollars, you will see this line increase by that amount next month with that report. And on the summary page, uh, revenue projection versus expenditure projection, the difference is, at this point, um, without the one point nine eight million dollars was five hundred and five thousand dollars surplus. You can see underneath this, however, um, that the impact of the one point nine eight million dollar transfer will increase expenditure for the county and reduce the county's fund balance by that amount. And so, um, the ending fund balance projection, at this point, for the two thousand and nineteen budget, is seven point nine percent. That is below the county's minimum recommended fund balance, um, which was twelve and a half percent of expenditures. Your financial policies, uh, indicate that if your fund balance falls below the twelve and a half percent, that a plan will be implemented to restore it. So the plan to restore this fund balance will be to, could, continue to proceed with the sale of the home and that will then allow for the county's fund balance to be restored. In the interim, there is also the issue of cash flow, which, um, we will be coming to you, um, at the meeting on the twenty-fourth to talk about and that will be, um, the request to issue a promissory note.
Besides cash flow, whenever I think of fund balance, one of the things that I always think about is, can it possibly have an adverse effect on our bond rating? And can you speak to that, in particular, if, if there is sort of a mitigation plan in place, will that address any concerns? Do you, do you anticipate, um, another, um, notice on our bond rating in between?
So right now, Moody's is going to be focusing on our two thousand and seventeen CAFR because that was just completed last month. So hopefully, they'll, you know, be paying attention to that. Although, um, we do usually have kind of a, uh, in the spring, I think it is spring to early summer, um, a minimal review by them. But they don't usually ask us for information. So unless they would go out and seek this information, they wouldn't be aware of that. However, um, if we do get an inquiry from Moody's, I think that, you know, we would work with, um, Raymond James to ensure that we laid out a plan and a process that they could understand and that would justify the reason that the county has taken the actions that it's taken and circumvent a downgrade.
And, and so, even though that, I do think that, I heard some people gasp, you know, with the seven point nine and I understand that it does, it does put us in a more precarious, right, situation, to sort of echo what Jim said about the, um, the reality of the, the money that we're owed, this is also, right, the, the reality of the money that we owe. And I think, doing both of these things, um, I, I think both of them were long overdue.
Ultimately, um, the, the nursing home accounts payable is the county's obligation and that would fall upon the nursing home. And again, something that, you know, if Moody's were to inquire, we could explain, is a more transparent process that we're trying to get to, um, with this plan.
Any other questions regarding that part? Seeing none, sorry, I flipped back. Did you, did you want to go for the budget change report?
Um, so the last report that you saw, um, let's see. Okay, the public defender, use of revenue from sale of assets to purchase equipment, um, that was the budget amendment that was approved in November, all the way down to VAC, um, the expense donations for veterans assistance. And then, um, for December, the county clerk's budget amendments, the recorder and the circuit court budget amendments were approved. And of course, the, uh, budget amendments that you approved tonight will be added to this report as well.
Thanks, Tammy. Okay, now we're on item six B, Job Content Evaluation Committee Recommendation for Reclassification of the Circuit Clerk Financial Manager Position. It's in, in our packet on page thirty-five, so it's, it's forward in the packet on where we discussed that. Is there such a motion? Ms. Fortato is there, second? Second, Ms. King Taylor, discussion. This is setting the salary for an, an upgrade for that position after the evaluation. Mr. Patterson.
I guess, is there anybody who can speak to, um, why the second position wasn't changed? I'm just curious, sort of why, like, went through the, um, job content evaluation and there wasn't a change, is that common?
Yeah, they, they evaluated and said there would be no change. And that was evaluated?
December.
In December, I mean, was that evaluated through FSM? I don't.
No, this was through the Job Review Committee. If you see, there's two parts to that, one requested, um, just the review, which was done. And then this is the financial implication. There was a financial implication to the one, which was an upgrade from grade I to grade K, or grade J to grade, grade K. And then the other one is, um, there was not an upgrade because they're still in the same classification.
Just want to apologize, I just realized that was off-topic.
Oh. All right, no issues. Any, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, or nay? None. Okay, now we go to the handout. Item nine, Finance, A New Business. Number seven, Planning and Zoning, Request of Approval of Application and if awarded, the Acceptance of the Pre-Disaster Hazard Mitigation Planning Grant. Is there such a motion? Mr. Patterson, second, Mr. Esri, discussion. John, we do have John Hall, if you have questions on this. This was approved the other night at ELOC, came out of the ELOC committee. Any discussion, any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Okay, is there any other business to bring before the board? Ms. Fortato.
Um, I just wanted to quickly commend, in, just in, in case folks didn't see it because it sort of fell right before the new year. But I wanted to commend the City of Champagne, uh, for recently rolling out their program, uh, for the city to certify minority and women-based businesses. And, um, they did that and at the first time, they had a partnership with First Followers who came, I think, in like the first half a day, they had fifteen women and minority-based businesses that were certified. And I really think that that kind of thing lies at the nexus of both finance, policy and personnel and, uh, uh, social justice in, in a really interesting way, uh, all the committees that we, you know, have at the committee of the whole. And, um, I've, I've mentioned this, uh, to the county executive, but I, I would, I know it was a long process for Champagne, my understanding is it took three years to get to that point. And I know it's something that the county has considered in the past and at that time decided not to do because they didn't think that we do enough business to make it worthwhile. Uh, but I'll just say, as somebody who in a former life was a staff member at a play, at a consolidated city-county that had that kind of list, and with somebody who was often, um, letting out contracts and things like that, the awareness that that kind of program does in order to bring a more diverse, um, local business, uh, sort of ownership, just to bring awareness to staff of what those businesses are, uh, it was, it made a huge difference to me. And also, I don't think we should underestimate, even if we only have a small amount of business that we do and not as much of these kind of things that, as say, a city like Champagne would do. For a lot of these, these are really small businesses, right? And, uh, just a little bit of business can make a really big difference to, to some of these small women-based and minority-based, uh, um, businesses. So this is the kind of thing, I think we have a good model in Champagne. Uh, maybe it won't take us three years because we could use some of what they did and learn from what they did, but it's something that I would like our committee, the finance committee, but all of, all of the committees to be moving toward. Um, and I'd like that to be a goal in, uh, going forward in two thousand and nineteen.
And I second, Stephanie, I'm looking into it, matter of fact, I got an appointment next week with, uh, Rachel Joey over at the city building.
Any other business? Seeing none, there is no chair's report. Items to be designated for the consent agenda. Finance A one, A, A one, A, B, C, D, E, F, H, I, J. Item four, A. Item five, A. Item six, B. And item seven, A. Does that, does that agree with everybody's records? With that, Madam Vice Chair, I conclude my report.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. My one, uh, okay, we're going into other business. We need approval of the closed session minutes for November thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Okay, Mr. Uh, Israel and, and Tinsley. And Tinsley. Okay, any discussion or? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Is there any other business needs to be presented in front of the board? Seeing none, we adjourn.